All right, it is six oh four PM and I'm going to bring this regular meeting of the Dunsmere City Council into order. All right, and with that, if everyone would please stand for the flags. All right, we could get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brian. Councilmember Lukeyzi.
Present.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Present.
Vice Mayor Sebring.
Present.
And Mayor Clarno.
Here. All right, and with that, we'll move on to public comment as we have no special presentations or announcements tonight. This is a time for members of the public to make comments regarding city business. If you'd like to make a comment, you can either come up to the podium or raise your hand on Zoom by going to the React tab. We'll do individuals in the room first followed by Zoom. And everyone will have three minutes. I will give a thirty second warning when your time is almost up. Please state your name and address for the record, and with that, I will open this meeting up to public comment.
Hello, I'm Andrea Herr, forty-seven forty Simpson Avenue, and I just wanted to mention that tomorrow is our third, I believe, senior lunch, and it's for folks sixty and over. Starts at eleven thirty with gentle cheer exercises. Sometimes we go do more than that, but those are led by Lisa Marie Leibitz Conan, who has a local yoga studio here in town. And we had, what do you think, Sharon, maybe forty, fifty people at the last one? Yeah, it's been well attended, and this week, the cornerstone is going to provide the food. Different, it's modeled after the senior lunch program in Weed, although that's weekly, but this one's monthly at this point. And involves, we try to involve mostly local restaurants. There'll probably be a few from Mount Chasta, too. In fact, Keith Cool has, was one of the restaurants so far. But a lot of the local restaurants seem very pleased to participate, so I think mostly it'll be the local ones. And just, you might kind of be curious how it's funded. The Rotary got a grant, a district grant, or for funding it for one year, we matched a certain amount of the money, and the Resource Center is providing all of the organ, staff, you know, to organize it and pull it off that day. And we're hoping to have the sound system together so that Ron McLeod can give a talk and slideshow on Dunsmere's history. And I, in closing, I'd also like to encourage people to give on Giving Tuesday, which is, I believe, December second, just it benefits a lot of local nonprofits that do important services in the community, like the Resource Centers, Great Northern, and many others. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment this evening? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Well, that will move on to council and staff comments, as the sheriff is not here. We'll go straight to Acting City Manager Michelson.
Well, thank you, council. I'll keep it somewhat brief. Just want to announce that we do have a brand new Public Works employee that started on Monday. So I already saw today on his fourth day, he was driving the dump truck down the street, so he's already behind the wheel, ready to go. So that's great. His name is Javier Ione. So if you see him around, give him a high five. The, I don't know if anybody else is going to mention this, but the final UP remediation update went out. So that project is completely done now. Was going to mention with Javier behind the dump truck that we are, Public Works is doing a lot of work around town, trying to do some sidewalk improvements. They've cut down some trees that have been lifting sidewalks, things like that. So just a big shout out to them for all their hard work. I've been in coordination with, with the schools, the High School District, and Parks and Rec and Botanical Gardens on some of our facilities. I wanted to mention that potentially, or most likely, we will be moving to dunsmereca.gov as an internet moniker, so a lot of our email addresses will be moving away from ci.dunsmere.ca.us. Kind of long, so it's going to go to dunsmereca.gov, so I'll apply to the website plus email addresses. And then finally, for all those lovers of copper, if you've heard, the penny is being discontinued. So for us, there's a fun article I was reading, but if anyone wants to hear about that article, please reach out to me. But for, in terms of the city aspect, we will not be using pennies any longer, so if you want to pay a bill and it's twenty-six cents and you give us twenty-five cents, well, then one cent will just stay on your bill for the next time. If you give us thirty cents, that would be over and above, so then you would be paying four cents over, right? So we're just going to leave that, it'll just be on the account. Okay, so we're not worrying about, we're not going to be making change back using pennies. We do still have some pennies right now. We have a few rolls, I believe, so we'll slowly let those, let those out. So just wanted to make that announcement. That's it, thank you.
All right, on to council comments. Councilmember Lukeyzi.
I don't have any tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Hubbard.
No comments.
Councilmember Ryan. Vice Mayor Sebring.
No comments.
All right. You know what? I'll just follow the trend here tonight, keep it short, and we'll just keep the moving meeting, or the meeting moving. So that will move on to approval of the minutes. All right, committee reports, there wasn't any committees, though, that met other than City Manager Committee, which we have our own item for later, so we'll go into that at that time. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes for eleven-six, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to approve as submitted.
There a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then it's approved. We'll go on to the consent agenda, which consists of one item, the check register for eleven-one through eleven-fifteen, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Do I hear a second?
No second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda approved. All right, we do have a public hearing this evening. We actually have two public hearings. The first one is introduction of first reading of ordinance five-eight-two, an ordinance of the city of Dunsmere, California, amending section seventeen dot six-eight dot one-one-zero of Title Seventeen of Dunsmere Municipal Code relating to the permitting process for painting in the historic district and its buffer zone. All right, Blake, are you taking this one?
I am happy to hand this over to Jessica up there on the video. She should be able to.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Clarno and councilmembers, just getting in, say planner. So you should be seeing the ordinance amendment presentation on your screens right now. Yes, and, okay, great, so you've already introduced the item, let me down slide here. The, the item before you is pertaining to historic preservation and essentially is needed because there, currently, if you look at the zoning code, it requires a discretionary review process to make any material changes to the exterior of buildings in the historic district. And this is, so if there is a proposed change just to the paint color of a building, it would need to go first to the historic district delegates and then through the planning commission, requires a public hearing, which obviously adds time to what could be a simple process of just repainting. And, and staff has noticed that it has had the effect of deterring routine maintenance or promoting, in some cases, I have seen repainting in the same colors even if they are not maintaining or improving the historic qualities of the district. In other words, that they're not exactly historic colors. And currently, there is no guidance provided in the ordinance or any design guidelines as to what colors would be acceptable. And so when these, when repainting does come through the planning commission, we don't actually have too much to go on and have to look, look at the context of the area. So the project is to amend the municipal code section to establish an administrative process for applicants who are proposing only to change the color of their structure if they select the color from an approved color palette. And the second part of the process, as you mentioned, is adoption of a color palette, and the entire ordinance change would apply not only to the historic district, but also its buffer zone. Because the way that the historic ordinance is set up at the moment, it does apply not just within the district, which is all of the area that's outlined in black on the zoning map within the town center, but it also applies to every property that's within three hundred feet. So on this map, oh, go ahead. Someone have a comment? On this map, you can see all of the properties that are in historic district shown with green endpoints, and then all the properties with blue are the ones that are within three hundred, the three hundred foot buffer zone to which this also applies. A little bit of background on the historic district, it is a nationally recognized historic district, and the historic preservation ordinance states that the purpose of the district is to foster civic pride in the beauty and accomplishment of the past, stabilize and improve the economic value of certain historic structures, districts and neighborhoods, and protect and enhance the city's cultural and aesthetic heritage and vitality. These photographs just show some of the colors that are seen currently in the historic district. You can see that generally, they are more natural, more natural colors. No, no bright neon colors or anything like that. So the ordinance changes that are proposed and that were in the staff report essentially provide a historic, in addition to the historic site alteration permit, add a process. Let me go scroll down a little bit here. Add a process for a historic paint color review permit, which is separate from the historic site alteration permit. This would only be applicable, again, if it's a proposed change to the color of the building alone. If there are any other alterations proposed, then they would have to go through a historic site alteration permit, so that is outlined here. Then the proposed process would be an administrative process, so an applicant would essentially provide a one-page form. And the planner would review the proposed color against an adopted color palette. And if the color that's proposed is consistent, then the, the paint color is approved. If it's inconsistent, then it goes to the historic delegates and then to the planning commission for public hearing. If there's any question about whether it's consistent, it also goes to the historic delegates and the planning commission, and essentially can be polled if there are any questions about, you know, combination of colors or anything like that. Appeals, just get appealed under an existing section of the municipal code, which is under appeals of administrative action. So that any determination that I would make could be appealed under that section. And then there is also provision under number six here that if there is proposed paint over exposed brick or unpainted wood, that that would need also to be forwarded to the planning commission as a historic site alteration permit. Okay. So a color palette, several color palettes were actually forwarded to the city's historic delegates for review, and after discussing all of the palettes, the delegates recommended the Benjamin Moore Historical Color Collection, with the exception of one of the colors, Heritage Red. And after the, the palette was brought to the planning commission, the planning commission agreed with the delegates, but also added, wanted to add a few bright whites to the palette, which I can all discuss here in a moment. So I did want to note, too, that even though we are naming a color collection that is made by a specific manufacturer here in this presentation, nobody would be required to use that particular brand of paint. And in fact, I contacted Dunsmere Hardware, and they can mix any of these colors and let me know that they would keep a catalog of all the approved colors on file, so they, they've got the formulas for all of Benjamin Moore's collection that they would keep on file there if needed, or an applicant could get the colors of the paint made anywhere else as well. So a quick word on the historic areas of downtown Dunsmere. Sacramento Avenue represents one epoch of history. Most of the buildings on Sacramento were constructed in nineteen oh three, after a major fire in or around nineteen oh three. And on Dunsmere Avenue, those were mostly constructed in the nineteen twenties. So there are, according to the, the National Inventory of Historic Places Registry report that we have, there are a number of different styles represented. Many of the buildings display more than one style, but most of the tones are natural and earth tone colors that could be produced at, at that time in history, using the materials that were available then. Here's some historic photographs. These are, the one on the left is from an old postcard, and then this is an old photograph of the district. This is the paint palette that we're looking at, the first page of it. And you can see there are no bright whites in that paint palette. And this is the, the second sheet of it. The Heritage Red down here in the lower right corner is crossed off, so that one is not permitted. If somebody didn't want to use that color, they could still propose it. It would just need to go to the planning commission. And then staff is proposing to add per the planning commission's recommendation, these bright, bright whites that are shown in the lower left-hand corner of the screen here. These are the, according to Benjamin Moore's website, they're at least the most popular whites in their palette. The reason for the bright white, just a quick note on that, is that titanium dioxide wasn't commercially available until nineteen twenty-one. So bright white is just not included in most historic color palettes. But again, it was recommended by the planning commission. So the colors you see on the lower left are in the historic palette that Benjamin Moore has, but the ones in the lower right here are the ones that are being added to these. So staff is recommending that city council finds that the proposed project would not have a significant effect on the environment under several different SEQA code guideline sections, one-five-three-oh-one, one-five-three-three-one, one-five-three-three-two, and one-five-oh-six-one-B-three, and introduce and read ordinance five-eight-two by title only, and waive further reading of the ordinance and direct staff to bring the ordinance back for adoption at the next regular meeting. And finally, to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-one to approve the historic palette. The, the palette, the resolution does have timing in it so that it would not become effective until the ordinance is effect, in effect. That concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Hi Jessica, thank you for the presentation and the staff reports. So my question is going to the color palettes. Are these, so for the streamlined process and the recommended color palettes, would this be for large portions of buildings, or would it also include accent colors as well? I, I think you did touch on it, but I just want to be really clear that this would apply to paint applied to any feature on a building, correct?
That's right. Any exterior changes are included in the historic site alteration permit, so even if it's just an accent color, if they, if an applicant were to choose off of this palette, then they can go through this administrative process.
And then my, my second question on the color palette is, would this color palette be implemented through the sign ordinance as well as signage within the historic district?
There is nothing currently that speaks to that. But that, that is a good question. I would, let's see here. It doesn't, let me, let's take a quick look at it real quick. Let's pull it up.
I didn't, I didn't see a mention of signage in the ordinance, but I, yeah, I think, but I just wanted to, to double check and make sure. And I was just curious if the historic commission delegates or the planning commission brought up the signage item.
Nobody read up signage. That wasn't something that was reviewed, and it was not something, you know, it's not, it's not in the historic site alteration permit process already, so I didn't add it for this either, but we could certainly add it. I, I think that's a very good comment. I don't know why, yeah, we wouldn't apply it to signs also.
My, my last question, and then I'll relinquish my time. When it comes to like hardware, metallics, or any, anything like that, I mean, it was pretty common to have some small metallic ornamental accents, finer detail. So what I'm understanding with this approved color palette and the process is that if people were proposing metallic paints in like gold or brass, they would have to go through the review process, correct?
That's right. It's not on there right now. We can, yeah, we can add them, though, if that is the desire of the council.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions before we open up the public hearing? Nope. All right, Julie Anna stole my question, so I do not have any additional questions, but I'm glad mine got answered. So thank you very much for that presentation. I'm really excited to see this come before us. I know we sent this to the planning commission quite a while back. So it's good to finally be taking steps to make life easier for people who are wanting to improve the buildings downtown. All right, with that, I will open this up for get, open up the public hearing. And with that, if you want to make comments, same basic rules as general public comment, three minutes, I'll give a thirty second warning. And with that, I will open up the public hearing.
Mark Rowley, Mossbury Hotel. I forget our address. Somewhere on, down the street. I'll make two quick comments. One is so what are you going to do about the existing ones that are clearly out of compliant? We have them out there. We have purple and lavender combinations, and, you know, been that way for a long time. I know we've gone through it. So we're, we're in two historical districts, so we know historical districts, and I certainly believe in them. But, you know, we're going to have to bring all of the folks around to tune up their buildings and get in appropriate colors. The second comment is this should be not also just vis, visual, but it should be an economic driver and economic stimulus for the downtown. And I'm not sure that a lot, oh, I still got three minutes, no. How do we? How do we use that as a stimulus? I think a lot of people are going to see this as, oh, gosh, here we go again, you know, whatever. I, I think we can use it to our advantage, but I don't know how to do this, but I would like to use our paint scheme as a component because I'm planning on coming back to you and saying, and we also need to do some street scape improvements that go along with that, that, that dovetail together, and it's a part of a master plan. When can we get to that, and what does it look like? And I'll leave you with this comment. And we may also need to use non-traditional ways to pull that off, and I think one of the ideas that I would like the city council to consider is maybe through simple little memorandums of understanding, maybe you can work with merchants or individuals or volunteers to do things on Main Street. Even painting buildings that clearly we're not going to get the owners, they, they, they just can't or won't, but they may not be opposed to it. So anyway, I, I would like to see this be a component of a little more expansive downtown sprucing up of it. And I would like to see the merchants lead that drive with their elbow grease and their financial commitment, and if, and if we can get grants and other funding, that's great. But I'm not going to lose sleep over thinking that tomorrow we're going to get the grant. But anyway, I think you're on the right course, but let's just be very cognizant. I remember when we did our color palette, it was the first time that the color committee had gotten together and they couldn't remember when. So let's make that a little more occasional for them so that they are kind of living with those colors and they understand what's going on. Thanks.
Thank you.
Pete Clover, four-four-oh-three Oak Street. I'm wondering about how this could apply to public art, specifically murals. In the historic district, I'm also wondering about the signage, if a business came to town and had very specific colors for their logo that they wanted on their sign. Would they, I guess they would just need to apply. I guess I'm just quite, not quite sure how that would work. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? And is there anyone on Zoom with their hand raised? All right, you want to unmute him? All right, Mr. McGonaghy, you should be unmuted and good to go.
Good evening, Mayor Clarno and councilmembers. Alan McGonaghy, four-one-one-six Pine Street in the historic downtown district. I'm here to, I'm here tonight to speak in support of ordinance five-eight-two and the resolution twenty-twenty-five-twenty-one to streamline the paint process and process, paint permit process and adopt a historic color palette. As a small business owner in the historic downtown district, I care a lot about how our downtown looks. Fresh paint along with our mural and well-maintained buildings make a huge difference for locals. For locals, tourists, and our short-term rentals that help fund the city through TOT taxes. But the current process where a simple color change has to go all the way to a planning commission public hearing can be intimidating and expensive, and in practice, it can actually discourage maintenance and creativity. Moving simply repainting, moving simple repainting to an administrative process as long as colors are within a clear historic palette is a smart compromise. It still protects the historic character of Dunsmere, but it respects people's time and money. It also gives staff and property owners certainty. While finally, we'll finally have a clear list of colors that are considered appropriate instead of guessing what might be approved. I also appreciate that the ordinance still sends bigger changes like painting over brick or mortar or arch, architectural modifications to the full historic review process. That's the right place for the deeper conversations. This keeps the focus on public hearings on truly significant change while letting routine upkeep move forward quickly. My hope is that this will encourage more downtown building owners to invest in repainting and restoration while directly supporting the goals, the city's goals around historic preservation, economic development, and a more vibrant downtown experience for residents and visitors alike. For this reason, I, for these reasons, I respectfully ask you to adopt the SEQA exemption and introduce the, and introduce the ordinance five-eight-two and approve resolution when two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-one adopting the historic color palette. Thank you for your time and working on this.
Thank you. Is there any other further public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And just to address a couple of the questions that were brought up is, yeah, number one, this is only, this only applies to anything moving forward. You know, we're not going to, no one has to go repaint everything since if their building doesn't match any of this, just because it is under the assumption that those buildings went through the full color choosing process through the planning commission and were approved. um, just because it is under the assumption uh, that those buildings went through the full color choosing process through the planning commission and were approved. The other one I wanted to just quickly address is the question of murals. I also want more murals in town. I don't exactly know the answer to how murals are affected. I believe they're under a complete statute.
Yeah.
And I was pretty sure she did, so I'm gonna hand it off.
Also, by the way, um, so under the current ordinance as it's written down, Jessica, you can correct me if I'm wrong, cause you wrote this. There is no, what's called an amortization schedule. So what Mr. Rowley had brought up in his public comment can be actually very common in other situations where we do what's called amortization. And so it's when you bring in a regulation, you take a look at what the existing uses are that are non-conforming and you develop a schedule for compliance. And so you essentially can work with those businesses to come into compliance over a series of time. Um, a lot of times cities partner amortization programs with incentives as well to reduce the cost of coming into compliance because there is, um, as the public commenter stated, kind of an incentive to get everybody into that coordinated color scheme. Um, you see it a lot with colors, you see a lot with signage. So there is an option to do an amortization schedule. Um, I, I would recommend that we would refer that item back to Jessica and our attorney, David Lim, um, to look at the legality of that because there is kind of a nexus you have to take into account of like, what is the cost to paint it? What has to go into that? Because it's not just buying the paint, right? It's also applying for an encroachment permit, scaffolding, people to do it, things like that. Um, so if that is something that the council wants to do, I would suggest putting it on a future agenda um, with a request for staff to review what an amortization program would look like for this type of program. And then I would recommend also linking that to funding to making that more accessible for people to get onto a faster schedule, which I believe we actually do have. We have that program, we approved
Yeah.
that would waive um, the fees surrounding the type of program.
I can speak to the, the primary purpose of this in the, you know, immediate future going forward was to reduce the um, administrative or bureaucratic burden on getting something done. You know, having to come to a meeting, having to pay for that when we just are just picking a color. We did adopt a program to incentivize downtown building owners. Uh, we were, we were going to approve up to ten thousand dollar matching grants um, to help them with the building. And actually, I think there's appetite on the council, correct me if I'm wrong, to maybe go even further if we can coordinate some major renovation all at one time to really build momentum on the economic development side. Um, that was uh, put on hold and defunded in our current budget, but with the um, uh, not finalized, but looking to pass measure D, there may be funds available to reinstate that program in the coming fiscal year. I think the, the time to implement that would be, once that measure passes, we'll be able to revisit our projections. So it'll be a direct result if it does pass of, of that passage.
And then going back to the um, questions. Um, so, and this is another one where Jessica can correct me if I'm wrong. Technically, if it's an existing mural within the historic district, it can be restored, it, it can exist. Um, in terms of new public murals, under the ordinance, it would have to go through a C U P process unless it was uh, looking through this, it would have to use the colorations here. That being said, um, for discussion with this group, uh, there should probably be a public art ordinance since it is something that's come up a number of times. And so you can definitely partner a public art ordinance over a historic district um, in this type of circumstance. Um, one of the reasons why you would want almost a separate ordinance dealing with public art generally is that there's no real requirements or enforcement for maintenance of murals because they just kind of happened, you know, in the past where typically with public mural ordinances, it requires an applicant coming in with a plan for maintenance for a property owner approval, things like that. There's a little bit more of a system related to that to maintain those public art pieces because there are certain circumstances of freedom of expression, freedom of speech where you get, you know, certain new property owners buying a property with a mural on it and then covering it. And then the artist being upset by that and suing over that, that has occurred in special circumstances. So there is, there is probably a need for a separate public mural ordinance that deals with public art specifically.
Can I maybe uh, ask a question and kind of address that? I, I think that would be wonderful to have in an ideal world, but we have so many ordinances we want to update and add. I'm not so sure spending our limited resources on that makes sense. Is there a way to just make it like a canceled decision as part of this ordinance? Like have a carve out?
So I guess
So in the meantime, looking, approve something.
So I think it would go back to Jessica. So would a public mural fall under the discretionary process of the exterior colors in the historic district?
Um, I think that it's not clear right now in there. Oh, David hasn't.
Oh, sorry, Jessica, I didn't want to interrupt you, but um, so regarding public murals, um, there is some case law um, regarding murals that kind of recent, I'd say within the last ten years, I've looked at it for other clients. Um, there are First Amendment issues, there are um, intellectual property right issues around ownership of the mural. Um, so I would recommend, even though I know this council has a lot on their plate, if you're interested in an ordinance, we can do an ordinance because there is case law. And if you do have artists come, they do have certain proprietary rights to the art, depending on how the contract is written, depending on where it's placed. Um, it is a burgeoning field. There's, there's a lot of new law on it, or not new, but you know, within the last ten years. So I would recommend not doing a carve out tonight. I would uh, kick it back to me and Jessica to kind of kick around and we can, I can pull some ordinances in other cities for you to take a look at, maybe do a study session and see what exactly the council would like to do. But I agree with Councilmember Brian, there's not a hurry to do it. You know, unless you're planning to, you know, put out a grant for, you know, five murals in the next thirty days or something. But we can kind of slow roll it and get, get a study session.
Yeah, and, and on that, the city of Riverside has an arts and culture district that does a really, really good job of, of promoting murals and public art that includes light installations, um, multi dis- uh, multi-disciplinary artwork that includes recycled pieces. Um, and so that would be a really good case for looking at how they do that. One of the really interesting things about that district is I did a, a mobile workshop at the APA conference in Riverside. And so I got to see all of it, is that they actually rotate their uh, murals every couple of years. So they cover them up and do new ones every couple of years. Um, obviously, I don't, I don't advocate for that specifically, but I mean, they have a lot of really interesting program around different options that you can have on that. And then finally, um, uh, just really quick to answer that other question. If there are businesses that have a branding guide or specific colorations, they would just have to go through the discretionary process. They would not be eligible for the streamlined process. So I'm not saying there's a Starbucks coming, but we all know what that logo looks like. And so if Starbucks did come in and they insisted on using their traditional branding guide, they could go to the planning commission and request discretionary approval of it. That being said, I have seen certain cities, um, Solvang is a really good example of it. I, I don't know if it's trucky or not, but there's a city in the Tahoe Basin that also has extremely strict application and Starbucks has morphed their logo to meet those standards. So there, there is a way around that, but um, there is a process for people who don't want to do these colors um, moving forward. But also this doesn't apply to signage, but I think, I think it would be interesting to have some talk about, but that's answering the question as well.
All right, hey, um, back to the murals if, if I might. Uh, I just want to know, uh, cause it, it's totally hoped for that we're gonna be engaging on mural work in the next three to six months. If someone wanted to show up in thirty days or next week with a mural proposal, what would the answer be, Jessica? What's the process? We still have to have some process, even if it's just dealing with that individual um, uh, project proposal.
Um, I, I mean, I, I would probably apply this palette, just given that it, murals are a large surface area of a building. I would probably apply this palette, given the way the ordinance is currently written, unless I hear from David. That it, that that's not a good idea. Um, David, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that.
Just, can I get a clarification before I answer that, just so that I make sure we understand that? Is it if someone wanted to come in and do a mural with these, with the paint palette, it's an administrative process? But if someone wanted to come in and do any other, a mural with anything else that goes through the planning?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay. No, you're, you're correct. I mean, the mural, a mural will have to go through the planning commission just because it is a change to the exterior of the building. And then we would encourage them to use the paint palette. And so if, if there were exceptions to that, they would already be going through the planning commission. Um, and so those changes could be made. It wouldn't be a variance or anything like that, since they're already in the planning commission.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, my answer is sort of along the same lines. I would say that art by its definition uh, is not, you know, just the change of color of the building. And so I would recommend that they go through a discretionary review.
Yeah.
Okay.
Even if they kept all the colors to the paint palette, I would still say that it's, it's, it's just saying, well, I'm gonna repaint it in one of these colors. They're gonna use multiple colors. Uh, it's gonna have some sort of expression. I think it needs to go through discretionary review.
So basically, it stays with the current process. Gotcha.
Yeah, cause I'm, the, the big thing with murals is you have to be really careful about how you objectively look at them. Because design, there's a Supreme Court case from a couple of years ago nationally, and I'm not familiar with the one that David's thinking of. But there was a national Supreme Court case that essentially said that design is actually part of your First Amendment right. And so a lot of cities are grappling with that when it comes to, for example, when I first saw this color palette, there are a lot of fleshy colors and there are certain fleshy body parts that people don't want to see. But if someone wants to paint a fleshy body part on their building, there, there are some First Amendment concerns with that. And I have a very specific example. Someone wants to ask me about it later. Um, where I have witnessed that happen, um, and you have very limited recourse for it. Um, and so that's kind of where like a separate public art ordinance is really, really important is because you have to balance that objectivity versus infringing upon people's First Amendment right.
Alright. Anything else?
Yeah, I got a clarifying question. Um, circling back to the actual buildings themselves in the surrounding area. So historic district and three hundred feet surrounding it. And this is all residential as well, right? Right.
Now, like the grocery store and
So just the businesses.
Well, no, the, it does affect the residential, but there are also businesses in the buffer area that are not part of the historic district.
So people that are currently out of compliance, what exactly happens? Nothing? This is just incentive moving forward? Okay, perfect, thanks.
Yeah.
Cool. Anything else?
I would, I will say, um, this is really lovely, Jessica. Thank you. I am so excited. This is good planning. I get so excited. Um, I, I would like to I would like to add um, metallic gold and metallic brass into the um, approved colors, but as accent colors only. Um, just because there are, are, okay, thank you. There, okay, that's a motion.
All those in favor of making that change?
Aye.
Aye. And just to clarify, the motion is to amend the proposed color palette to add metallic gold and metallic brass as, do you want to add bronze too?
True.
Okay, and metallic bronze, we will revoke.
Or, or do you just want to loop this into the, no, it's fine.
We've come this far.
We will come back to it. So the motion is to amend the color palette to add metallic gold, metallic brass and metallic bronze as acceptable accent colors? And I think I'll, okay, there's a second, okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also, I don't know if I like the bright white.
I'm just thinking, I just want to point this out. I believe that is added because there is currently buildings that are that color, such as the Siskiyou Museum. I'm pretty sure Siskiyou Museum is currently that.
I get it, but we're not amortizing people right now. And so like
No, I, I, I
I don't like the stark white either.
I'm just gonna put it, I'm just gonna put it, I, I'm just gonna put it this way, we have over two, we, I think we have about two hundred colors here. I don't think we're gonna see everyone just paint every single building it, and especially if it applies to houses.
See, I
An residential area, I want to give
My personal thing is I have painted a room chantilly lace and it is very bright white. And it might actually like be like a vision hurting thing, if it's a very large building. So you know what, I'm gonna do it. I, I motioned to remove chantilly lace and simply white from the approved colors.
All second.
See them in the approved colors.
No, it's up on the
It's a, it's nineteen.
Oh yeah, I don't want the bright whites.
I, I, I'm fine with white dove. White dove is just not white enough. But I, I have painted something chantilly lace and it is obnoxiously white and then I don't like simply white. So I, I'm I'm doing it. I don't care. This is like the funnest thing I've done today. We don't get to have fun items very often.
If they want it, they can always go to the planning commission.
Yeah, if they want bright, they can go to the
Boo is seconded. I believe someone seconded it.
I seconded it. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Four to one.
All right, uh, just wanted to ask why they got rid of uh, heritage red.
It's really red. It's really red.
Too bright?
It's really a robust red.
I like it.
You just came up with a brand new paint color. Like, why isn't that in here? Why is it robust red?
I, I just watched the YouTube video on the Pantone colors, so.
All right, uh, I had another question on the paint. Is there a limit on how many they can use?
There is not.
Is it maybe typical to put like no more than five or six?
I think it goes, I think this might be a question for David because like this starts to get into, like paint colors is part of like the whole First Amendment and, and the reason why you can really do this for historic districts because historic districts do allow much stricter physical feature. But I, I think that's a question to David, if like, if we limit the total number of colors they can choose, like, is that too far?
Um, really up to the council, it's kind of a policy decision. I would remind the council that even under the historic paint color review permit, they still, it would still be under the discretion of the city planner. So if somebody said, you know, I want to use every single color here in a one foot by one foot square, you know, on the building, the city planner still has a discretion to say, you know what, I think I'm gonna send this to the planning commission, because I'm not sure how that's gonna look or pan out. But clearly, uh, in terms of policy, you could limit the amount of color. I mean, that's completely up to you.
I might propose that if it's more than five paint colors on the exterior of a building, it goes to planning commission for review. I don't know, I want to get rid of Victorians. They have a lot of colors.
They said the
Yeah.
Still be administrative. So there's um,
I just don't want twelve.
But like I said, since it's administrative, they can still say, no, we're gonna, this is, we're, we're gonna I think there's still a way, but that's still a perfect, yeah, that, that can still happen.
Oh, I just want a question. And then that gets to my last question, which was administrative process, can we describe, is essentially city manager's discretion at the end of the day?
No, it's city planner.
City planner, okay. Cool.
Yeah. Yeah, so for an administrative process, what you typically do is you have someone come in, they fill out the permit, they pay the permit fee, which is usually significantly less than a C U P. Um, that permit then goes to the city staff. In this case, it's the planner, they review it. If it meets it, they go, yep, you're good to go.
Yeah, this will take the process from like What is it now?
Too much.
It's over well over a thousand, is it? Yeah, lower than three thousand, but higher than?
Well, we wouldn't know the price until we approve the ordinance and then they
How it is currently.
I think a current C U P is fifteen hundred and five bucks.
Take it from fifteen hundred to like
Much lower.
Several hundred at most, it seems like.
Okay.
It's gonna be a significant savings.
I want, did want to ask if we could, in the near future, look into subsidizing historic paint administrative uh, planning process? That was part of our effort, but I think that's a low, very low hanging fruit if we were to subsidize it for at least a year or two. So that it's zero cost. You still have to put in the application, it's administrative, but there, there's nothing upfront to get this process started.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea for us to bring back. And talk about as well. All right, anything else or do I hear any motion?
Um, I would like to make, before we do the formal motions, uh, I would like to make a motion to refer the topic discussion of signage coloration back to the planning commission and historic district representatives for a discussion um, to see if they would be interested in doing that program.
Yeah, I think it'd be wonderful to get a uh, a streamlined process for signage as well.
Yeah.
Just if you want something special, go to the planning commission, go through the process, but if it's just really the basics.
And this would just be for the historic district.
Just the historic district.
Three hundred feet.
Yeah. And when we're talking about priorities, signage ordinance is a little higher up there than murals for me.
So is there a second to mine?
Yes.
All right, moved to seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will note the planning commission did have a vibrant conversation regarding all of this as well, so.
Yeah.
I think they are potentially as excited as you are.
All right. I'm done being ner.
All right, um, unless there's anything else, is there a motion? Do you have a change that you wanted to make? Do you make the motion overall?
No, I, I made my, my change that I wanted with the metallic, but, um, I'll, I'll go through. I move that on the basis of the entirety of the record before us, we make the finding that the proposed project would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment. And that it is exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section one, five, three, zero, one. Existing facilities, section one, five, three, three, one, historical resource restoration rehabilitation. One, five, three, three, two, infill development projects and section fifteen, uh, one, five, zero, six, one. Subsection B subsection three, the common sense exemption. And I move that we introduce and read ordinance five, eight, two by title only, that we waive further reading of the ordinance and that we direct staff to bring ordinance five, eight, two. Back for adoption at the next regular meeting and move we adopt resolution twenty, twenty-five, twenty-one to approve a historic paint palette as amended.
Sarah's second?
I second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, we've been trying to do this for a while. Thank you.
But it's just, it's so well researched. You gotta give things time sometimes.
No, it, it predates Jessica being our planner by.
Yeah.
Years.
Good to finally see it and, and such a thoroughly researched and, uh. Vibrantly discussed state. All right, well, that will move on to public hearing number two, authorization to close out CDBG downtown revitalization grant. Uh, twenty-one dash CDBG that ED that one, zero, zero, zero.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so this item is to close out the grant. So that's what's, uh, being asked of council tonight. Uh, there is a slight modification to the motion for whenever we do get there, but I will get to that. So the city was awarded a CDBG Community Development Block Grant. That's what that stands for. Uh, it's a planning grant and it was essentially to create a revitalization plan. And with some subsequent action items. So, uh, the council did accept this plan in twenty twenty-four at the April eighteenth meeting. Through resolution twenty, twenty-four dash zero, eight. So the resolution or the revitalization plan has been accepted by council. Um, and that is the consultant that was or the sub, uh, sub award recipient was Cosmont. And so they were the ones that created the plan and brought it forth. Um, so this particular item to close out, we basically need to report out the accomplishments. Now, those accomplishments were simply that the plan was created and accepted or adopted by the council. There was also some actual action of Cosmont and city staff going to a, um. Shopping mall conference. I forget, there was a certain. I, I don't remember the terminology at this point, but it was a shopping, a retail or shopping mall conference. Uh, so they attended that. Um, also as well, Cosmo and the city did do multiple meetings, um, themselves. Uh, and then recently there's been a little bit more of an effort to have Cosmo reach out to our local. Um, direct businesses, direct counterparts with the chamber. Um, so those have been the accomplishments of that, of this particular grant. It was in total two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, two hundred thousand dollars of it went to Cosmont. Um, we will be disencumbering approximately, if I can get my numbers straight here, uh, approximately twenty thousand dollars. We will be disencumbering. Um, and so. That is that. So I think that's all of the background.
Good questions on accomplishments. We were told several times that we had like a hotel study that was going to help us in marketing efforts too. Told it would be forwarded to us. I've never seen anything in that regard.
Seen a hotel study.
They did show us parts of it the last time they were here.
Yeah, I just want to.
Make sure we get that document.
Make sure we, we have all the work that was done on our behalf, you know, going forward. Not that they're not around as a consultant, if we were to choose to use them, but outside of this grant, I want to make sure we have the, the work that could be useful for us going forward.
Yeah, so ensure hotel study.
And, and just anyone they've taken meetings with. I mean, it's kind of our, it was on our behalf. If we're not able to afford to retain them to continue to meet with those people, if they're relevant, we'd like to know their contact info and. You know, be able to keep up those conversations if there was any interest.
I'm going to be honest, you're probably not going to get that.
We're. Yeah, I want to jump into what I think is one bigger part here. So we're going to be disencumbering, you said approximately twenty thousand. Under the grant, what, that I know we could do that to research downtown revitalization, but also a portion of that was. It's, um.
Implementation.
Implementation. So is there any way that instead of. Releasing that forty thousand dollars back into the state pool from whence it came, we could, uh, use that to assist. With implementation of some portion of downtown revitalization. Say something that we've already voted on and is currently having funding issues like the, or that was having funding issues. Um, under the budget, which, which is the work in downtown.
So we would need to have it be applicable to the scope of the grant.
Okay.
As in a downtown revitalization plan. So I am trying to find all the expenditures I can that fit within that.
What's, what's the timeframe though?
Description.
If there is a way that we can take something that was put into the downtown revitalization plan that Cosmont said that we should do.
You would have to do it and then actually have receipts for it. And that's the issue is that your grant closeout is December seventeenth. And so you do not have enough time unless you have something to do before December seventeenth where you can charge it. It's an eligible cost. And you have receipts for it and you include it in the closeout.
We buy a bunch of paint, yeah.
Middle of December.
I think you would have a really hard time with audit that you would have to apply those. So it, you can't stockpile resources or materials. You can't project out future, you know, staffing and things like that. Like, for example, we couldn't. Pay Cosmo twenty thousand dollars now and say, hey, can you hang on for another two months? You have to essentially expend the funds and complete the activity. By that December seventeenth deadline.
Well, obviously we'd like to spend every penny of it if possible. So be creative, please. Does this allow you to us passing it tonight to still do expenditures or no?
Yes, it does. Yes, of course. And I will find every last penny that I can, every last nickel I can.
Nickel, nickel. Oh, man.
Well, no. We, you should be stockpiling any pennies. You can get your hand bump right now. So.
They're worth more than a penny. You didn't hear?
It does cost three cents to make one cent. Um, no, I will find every last expenditure I can in order to close this out with as little. Disencumbrance as possible, for sure. Um. I, I can, I'm, I'm working with our current grant person to try and get, you know, uh, a lot of staff time. Um, in this, in this portion. And so. Um, I just want to make a statement that it'll be at most twenty-five thousand, twenty-two, five thousand of disencumbrance. But I will get that as close as I can. There will not be another meeting prior to. Or at least an easy meeting prior to the final closeout for us to have this public hearing. Okay, but. Yeah.
All right.
Thank you for all the work in administering it. It's been a long, long grant process.
Was there at least a five percent admin?
Uh, uh, I mean, we're actually directly doing staff costs. I mean, not even.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, not even a indirect cost.
Okay.
If that's kind of what you mean by the five percent, but yeah. No, I'm, I'm directly allocating it. And so I've gone back. A little bit of time as well.
Yeah, okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, with that, I will open this, uh, public hearing for public comment. Three minutes, thirty second warning. Please keep any comments to this particular item. And with that, we'll do individuals in the room first. If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please raise your hand.
Uh, Mark Rowley Mossprey Hotel. Wow, um. I know I, I, I along with other downtown merchants, I would like to, uh, see a finished product, maybe old school. Binder style or online or whatever. I've seen parts of it before. Do you hear that sound? I think that's the toilet flushing as that. From my perspective, as it goes down and it's completely irrelevant to what we need to do. I guess the part that makes me frustrated and angry at a personal level is. I'm not aware of very many people that, that got involved in this study locally, and I don't know if they asked any of us, but our thoughts were on it. And, and I consider myself. A halfway expert on this. I've been involved. In line item on the documents and at least a half a dozen. Uh, CDBG grants for economic development and other ones. And I've been involved in probably over a dozen of these. This thing was as off target as I've seen. Uh, none of them are, you know, perfect documents, but. That's in the past. Moving forward, I do want to announce that there is. Effort and motion and, and some of you are aware of it on Main Street, that finally I think we're getting involved. The, the third group, which is the merchants, and I think they realize that they need to, to help lead the charge here. And I think that that's been a missing ingredient for a long time. So I'm happy for that, that we're, we're moving forward. But, uh, looking in the past, I'm really hoping that, uh, you know, we can work together with you folks and staff. Uh, and try to figure out how to do something with nothing, but that's okay. That's not intimidating. Uh, it's just a reality and I think we can move forward. So we'll be coming to you from time to time as individual businesses and whatnot. But I do feel a horsepower developing on Main Street for the very first time. Since we've been involved in the last thirteen years. So out of this, I think we've got some motion. But our approach is going to be literally the opposite. Instead of trying to rejuvenate the largest of our structures. We're going to start on the other end and build from within because that's all we have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Clother, um, so I understand that their. Essential task was to create a downtown revitalization plan, but in their contract, there were multiple tasks. That they would be carrying out over the course of two years for this enormous amount of money. Um, task four was, um, this. Cosmont will identify potential economic incentives, funding sources, financing structures, land use strategies and other relevant economic development tools. Such as business expansion, attraction, retention, enhanced infrastructure financing districts. Sales tax assessment review, revenue, zoning strategies such as development opportunity reserve, state and federal grants. Um, including infill infrastructure grants, affordable housing and sustainable communities grants. And California Infrastructure Bank, I bank financing taxable or tax exempt debt financing and or other tools. To attract and optimize development opportunities that achieve the city's economic fiscal goals and objectives. I had a meeting with them last week and I asked them to tell me like I was five, like what did they do? And they could hardly say anything. They said, we made a plan. We had a community meeting. We got Hilton sort of interested in Cave Springs and that was literally it. And I am just so upset that this grant money was wasted on these people who clearly didn't care. And I was trying to figure out if there was a ball dropped, like, was it Dustin? Was it, were they just talking to Dustin Reeve and he dropped the ball? Would it have been different if they had been allowed to meet with other people? But clear, honestly, I. Just the whole thing is so maddening and I just wish we could have done it differently. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a comment on Zoom. There's no additional in-person summit. All right, uh, you want to unmute? It was, but Alan has his hand up now, so. So Alan now and then, or. And then Quinton's hand raised again, so.
What's happening is that there's a setting on right now that allows one person to raise their hand at a time. And so I think both Quentin and Alan would like to.
So Alan, you're unmuted right now. I don't know who, given that's technicals issue, I don't know who had.
Um, I'm. If you guys are.
Yeah, go ahead.
Awesome. Um, I just, uh, four, one, one, six Pine Street, Alan McGonaghy. I kind of want to echo what Ms. Kate was saying as well. Um, we were really excited for Cosmo. When we were all at that meeting, you know, they gave us that plan and then had a couple of town halls. And as far as I was telling everyone in town, hey, with Cosmo being on our team, we're about to roll out. A big Dunsborough revitalization program. We're all just about to burst at the seams. And I had been saying that all spring, all summer. And thoughts of that we were gearing up for them to start working after they had all the town hall meetings. After they did the plan and we were going to, in the next two years, with the couple of town hall meetings, we're going to roll out this said plan. Uh, and then when we have that Cosmo meeting on Monday, essentially they're saying they're done September or December nineteenth. And they're pretty much wrapping it up. To the point where I followed up and like, what did you guys do? And then, you know, uh, contacted Hilton. And that's as far as I could tangibly. See, and within the amount of money that was allocated for it, I just wish we would have been able to. Use that to actually revitalize downtown and not just give it to Cosmo. In a way where echoing what Mark also said. Um, kind of flush it down the toilet, even though I appreciate city council and staff members' hard work on everything that they tried to do. To bring this together. I'm not trying to point fingers and say where it was a ball dropped. I just hope that moving forward with this type of. Um, consulting that we can really hold them accountable in such action, action plans if they are going to. Offer those action plans to us. Um, and I just really want to appreciate council's time on working on this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you want to unmute, uh, Quinton? All right.
Thank, thank you. Um, sorry, I was lowering my hand because I was trying to unmute. Uh, it wasn't because I didn't have a comment. Um, anywho, Quentin Gaddy, Siskiyou Economic Development, five, nine, five, six, Castle Avenue. Um. I also am, am, am quite a bit disappointed with a lot of the outcomes. Just to add context, uh. I originally wrote the grant for the city and I wrote the RFP and I helped score the RFP with city staff. And one of the reasons why we scored and selected Cosmont over, um, the other contractors, you know, one was Garavalia. One was, uh, Retail Solutions. Was because we had the belief that Cosmont had the network. And the business expansion, attraction and retention, the bear work that Kate was referencing. That was going to implement that side. You know, we knew, we, we wrote it with the intent that the plan was going to be the quick and easy first step, you know, just kind of gauge the community. But the impetus of the grant was for them to really do that recruitment work. And our goal was to see them bring in at least one business. Have someone come in and buy a building, whether it be the old pops building or the old bank building or something. And I, for the life of me, you know, having written the budget for the grant, don't know how the money was spent. Um. I, 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 I'm not seeing the fruits or the rewards from the grant. Um, if I could go back, I probably would have done things differently. Um, so I am disappointed in, in, in that aspect. Um, some other things that I'm disappointed to is just some of the follow through. Like, for example, uh, within the plan, strategy four was on small business assistance and entrepreneurship strategy. And I worked as a good team faith play, you know, good faith player, team player, and I implemented that immediately. Worked with Kate at the chamber to start doing office hours on Friday at the chamber. And not once did they follow up and say, hey, how's that going? You know, what are you seeing there locally? Are, are, are you seeing a sustained demand? And, you know, um, my honest answer is in the long run, we've had some impact. You know, we've helped start five businesses. Um, but there are days I'm there where I don't see a soul. And if I didn't live in Dunsborough and if I had a budget. Travel to Dunsborough to provide this service, I would not be able to justify it in my budget. So, um. I think in the future, you know, I'm, I'm right there with Mark. I think it's, 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 it's in the community's hands. The merchants are really going to have to, you know, put their pedal to the metal. And, and, and drive, uh, some of this improvement going forward. I wish we had a little more direction, um, and a little less.
Thirty seconds.
You know, surveying everybody and seeing what everybody wanted and throwing everything at the board to see what sticks. Um, but, uh, I'm, I'm grateful it stimulated a conversation in the communities, uh, talking about it. So, uh, thank you for your time.
Right, thank you. Thank you. Art, any additional comment? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing. Art, who wants to start?
I can go if you want me to. Thank you, Quentin, for that public comment. Thank you, Mark, Kate, Alan. I am so deeply disappointed with the net results of this effort. Quentin, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was about four years ago that this began. I mean, this is a long effort. So I excitedly asked for updates. Month in, month out. We waited, we applied, we got it, we got approved, but it wasn't funded yet. I mean, I mean, there's two years of expectations on the community that the visioning. The, the potential, the momentum that we all see and feel, but haven't really put together yet as a town economically. That this was going to be the catalyst, this is going to be professional help to organize us and. Help us articulate our vision to outside investors, to ourselves, to our community. And we, we, we put a few things on hold for a number of years because this was coming. And I will say that the entire exercise has been quite interesting because, you know, two and a half years into the actual grant part of it. We did hold seven, plus the meeting Monday, but I won't count that. We held no less than seven meetings that I attended. The public was open to and encouraged to come to. Some of them were more broad or more narrow about the plan. The community, we often ended up without the merchants present, and I'll say that just because it's a hard truth.
And we tried to get them there.
Sometimes they were there.
In the process, it was, there was.
It's a tough thing. We did so many. I actually requested three additional. Like other council members were in support of it, but I insisted on three additional meetings with the public, not because we needed to waste their time. Being here or listening, but we wanted to make sure everybody had the opportunity to, to buy in. I think one thing I've learned from this plan. Is that the town is looking for a silver bullet, has been for a long time. And that there is no such one move that's going to change everything, including this grant. I think their ability to help us is, is definitely a disappointment and. There's just no other way to get around it. We, we haven't seen anything here except for some decent data collection. If there's one thing we can take going forward, we've got some data, we can improve upon it. You know, the very fact that people can say this plan misses the mark lets me know that they, they have other ideas, other thoughts. You know, it might actually fall to us who are here, who are invested in this town, this community, to come up with a plan that, that does reflect us. I would like to see. You know, it's not a static thing that can't be updated. Let, let's take what we can from it and move forward. But I would challenge everyone to stay involved. There, there is not an outside consulting group necessarily that can come and change the town. Single handedly if the people don't want to go there. So it may be a stronger case to start with a grassroots effort. Without all this overview of how it should do and stick with the basics. But there is expertise in this, there's books. We're, we're really blessed to have amazing knowledgeable people in the town interested. I'm happy to hear that there's motivation on the merchant side. I, I feel that often. Not normally this time of year, so that's a really good sign. I feel it every spring and then it's somewhat disastrous every fall. So I'm really happy to feel that, see that. I don't think we need to ignore big projects if they're possible. But let's just start with as many small victories as we can. And I would like to see if, if possible. It doesn't have to be revisiting the entire plan, but on our own end. Accountability wise, we know how it failed, potentially as a plan wise, let's revisit it. We adopted it in two thousand twenty four with the hope that we could actually achieve some of the actionable items. If we need to narrow it and focus more on downtown revitalization, let's do that. I'd like, I'd like to see the intention of this not be thrown away just because we, we've essentially. Stagnated when it comes to our effort to revitalize. And this plan just kind of. Okay, I, I'm supportive of closing it out and not paying Cosmo more. As far as people understand, as far as them not working, so everyone understands this. We absolutely have the option as a city to retain them as consultants going forward. I, for one, will not support that at this time with our current budgetary constraints.
I have a few things I want to say, but I'm going to let anyone else who wants to go first. Go first. So, anyone else?
Sure. I don't want to. I talk a lot, so.
Oh, I was, I mean, we came in kind of late on the project, so I just. I didn't see the beginning process of it, but it is, I was excited when we got on council to hear about it and. It just kind of flatlined and I. Hope that we get at least like a binder and a collection of all the data they gave us, but.
Well, on that point, we are entitled to all products produced. And so if there is something missing. That's a conversation with the city attorney and, and acting city manager. So you are entitled, they are our product, we paid for that. So if, if there is anything missing. The only reason I made the comment earlier, it's like, just because you had a meeting with someone, you know, contacts is a different conversation. But yes, if, if there is a deliverable that was promised, if there was a deliverable that was. Done and not shared with the council or shared with staff, you know, we are entitled to that product.
Well, in all fairness, Councilman Moon Casey, I, I didn't. Demand Blake produce it. I asked Blake to ask for it. Like, if they say no. And to give you middle finger, that's on them. But it's, it's up to us to ask.
I guess I just feel like it's a lot of money and not a lot to show for it. And maybe we can label the binder two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I can say, I, I've learned from this. I, I had my, some red flags about them as a consultant initially. I wasn't part of the panel. Counsel was only presented with one option, it should be said. From this whole selection committee, we, at that point in time, staff decided to internally vet everyone and bring us their choice. So there wasn't a lot of comparison on the council level. But the hope was, there's a lot of really bright minds who, you know, thank Quentin for all his work, Blake. The city manager at the time. For putting that work in, this was not a right fit for our town. They, they don't understand how to scale their economic knowledge. I've had a lot of conversations with the principals here, trying to move this forward. They don't understand how to scale it to a town our size. It's just not what they do, is what we learned, is my opinion.
Yeah, I guess my perspective on this is a little different because I work with consultants a lot. I disagree with that sentiment. I think that may have happened in this circumstance. But I was checking my notes on something and I did actually bring up pretty early in the process when we did get the plan that it was too much. There were too many priorities and we needed to narrow it, which is usually what I tell this council when we talk about goals and projects. Is that you want too much for such little resources. I understand it was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant and that seems like a lot of money to people, but two hundred fifty thousand dollars over a. Two, three year period is not a lot of money in government because you're paying prevailing wage. So I think that's what people need to remember about that. And, and it is totally okay to be upset. I'm not very happy with the outcome either, just to preface that, that piece. I was more upset with myself because I didn't realize that the deadline was this month. I, for some reason, had it in my head, we had another year. So that's my fault, so I apologize for that. That being said, though, yeah, going back to it with consultants and I, and I think one of the issues that occurred here and I'm, I'm happy to, you know. Talk further about it, but I'm not going to really lean into it is. You, you have to, as a staff person, you have to give very clear, direct direction to a consultant. Because you are the client and you have to be a very assertive client and you have to say, this is the product that I, that I want, this is the direction that I want you to go. That being said, the, the city council, I think, did have some opportunity to do that and set some priorities. I remember we had a prioritization meeting over the plan. We did have people attend that. We prioritized from there. But I think there was maybe a disconnect in giving direction to the consultant after that in terms of really pushing forward with really well meaning tasks. And that, and that happens and, and you can be disappointed about that. I think there are some really great usable parts of this. I don't think the study is super in depth, which is I think what was anticipated. And I, and I agree, I think, I, I think I would have wanted to see more depth to some of the recommendations. And actions and implementation, but they did do. Decent community outreach at the beginning to develop those, those pieces. I think we kind of lost the contract about halfway through personally. I think that's where we started seeing less communication, less, less direct outreach. That being said, one of the items I'm going to request for future agenda is the formation of an ad hoc. To continue to see some of these forward. And I think at least focusing on a couple of things, and I, I really go back to this and I, I hammer on this a lot is. It's better to do a couple things at a very high quality than want to do everything. And we do that to ourselves consistently in this city. And I understand that it's really frustrating that we can't do a public mural ordinance. We can't do cannabis retail, we can't do this, we can't do moss spray, we can't do it all at the same time. We do not have the money and staff to do that. No city has the money and staff to do every single thing they want to do. But point blank, no one does. So I think. Being very focused, I think it's really great the merchants are getting together because I think that's a core piece that was really difficult to engage going. Through, just from my perspective, I think the consultant could have done a lot better. But, you know, I, I would like to introduce an item at the next council meeting to talk about what the next steps of this are and how it is going to continue forward. So that's the two cents item.
Alright, anything else before I go? Nope. Alright, so I, you know, I came into this kind of tween. I had the difference and I was in the middle and I can, I always got on council right about the whole time the grant was assigned to Cosmo. And I saw a couple things. That I don't know if they had been different, that it would have actually changed anything, and but I just kind of want to put this out there for everybody. One thing I saw, and I, like I said, I don't know if it actually did affect the work that they put out, how the work was done. I know it affects how much time we had to do everything. But it seemed like it was about three or four months in, they had done a workshop. Hadn't been all that well gotten out to unity. They've done another one. I think there was three workshops. And they seemed like they were just ready to go, put out the plan. And then there was a big push by a certain member of the community and that also went through, you know, that. I don't particularly remember how council took it at the time. But we ended up going that route, which was, you know, following this member of the, this prominent member of the community who said. Hey, we should do more surveys, we need to do more meetings. And then we basically spent the next, it felt like seven months redoing the first four months. And I really wonder if they, as a consultant, just lost interest at that point. Because they almost had nothing to do for us during that time. Because they really, I don't feel I got any more information over that next seven months. And I think one thing we need to remember going forward. Anytime like this is that when we have a consultant for a limited period of time, when this started out, three years felt like a long time. But we really need to make sure in the future that we just move quickly. And yeah, we, we need to get the community's input. We need to get information on that. But we can't just stop the entire process for months.
And that's kind of my point, yeah.
And they're going back forward again and it's like. You know, I was a new counselor at the time and I really, you know, at the time, looking back, you know, hindsight's twenty twenty. We really just needed to push forward at that point. And going forward into anything like this that happens again, we need to make sure. That we push forward because in the end, I agree with everyone else's sentiments today. I'm very disappointed. Just because I feel like there's a lot of people, I can name three or four people in this room who over the same period of time. Have achieved more for downtown revitalization for either free, not very much money. Or the money that their business, the money of their business than what we paid two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for. And, you know, I, I, I could just look at a couple of people and be like, I, I, you know, just to use Mark, use an example. The document that you emailed me recently is more actionable than the plan. Now, I think the plan can potentially be used in the future as a marketing document, something completely different, but. You know, a lot of the work Kate has done, everything Matthew's been doing for downtown revitalization, all these things have been. There have been so many people who've just been pouring their heart and souls into this. For virtually nothing compared to what we spent on this and. I really would like to see us. As you said, not let the process stop, do a review on it, try to pull anything out we can, try to have it integrated into what we're already doing. And you know what? I also feel like there's a lot of the useful stuff in there is stuff that. Marcus suggested that Kate wants to do, that other business people that we're, we've got are already working on.
There's a whole item on moss spray trails and recreation. I mean, it was kind of a culmination of what a lot of people have said in the community. And like I said, it is completely okay to be upset that they did not go deeper on those items. It's okay to point out that they didn't give us a fiscal plan on how to do those items. Like, that's okay. That, that's not in this and I'm not happy with that either, but there are some salvageable pieces in this, I think. You know, in my opinion, and, and that's why I'm going to be recommending, you know, an item for the next meeting, so. I'm happy to motion to close out twenty one C D B G E D one zero 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 three.
Wait, there was something different.
Okay, motion to close out two one C D B G E D one zero 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 three. As completed and direct staff to process all necessary documents. Second? Okay.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye. And just a last note, sometimes when you get a crappy document. It doesn't matter to a granting agency because I have worked on a couple of economic development items where. It wasn't a great study, but because you did the study, people will get you extra points on your grant document. And on your grant application for future projects. I know that that's a weird small caveat, but like, we theoretically could say. We went through this process, we completed the plan, therefore we should be eligible for like, for example, E D A, the Economic Development Administration. Really likes to see that stuff. And I know that it's super fluffy for people, but sometimes that's what the granters want to see. So that is a little small caveat that we can use to leverage, even though people don't like.
I think that goes with like.
Just to build on that too, I completely agree with you because also, just because we're frustrated with this plan. Because we know our city, doesn't mean someone at the state or someone at some other granting agency who looks at this plan is going to go like. Listening. Oh, look, they went, got a lot of stuff in it. Cool, you know, like, and we couldn't get more money to do more things based off of the work that they did.
And the big thing too is the grant that was, the grant that was applied for was for technical assistance. So that's a big thing to remember as well is that it wasn't as encompassing as if you go back to the C D B G programming. And you look at the E D B G or other items on there, there is more substantial funding for specific projects. But you typically are not eligible for that funding until you do a planning document, which guess what? You have a planning document, even if it sucks, it's still a planning document.
On that note, I'm going to put us in recess until seven forty three. And any other comments on this can be made during that recess to individual. And any other comments on this can be made during that recess to individual institute. Alright, it is seven forty four and I'll bring this meeting back into order. If not. It's seven forty five and I'll bring this meeting back into order. There we go. Alright, um, we'll move on to item number ten, old business. Appoint Blake Michelson to interim city manager and decide unemployment details.
Great, so basically, uh, bringing the item back from, uh, last meeting that, uh, council, uh, member B K Z kind of mentioned. So, um, essentially the item is simply to, um, discuss that from last time. Potentially talk about some employment details. And so you see in the background discussion. Um, what is kind of, uh, talked about a little bit, so essentially it's a salary. Uh, for myself, so thank you for even considering the item. If you look on the second to last page of the agenda, you will see the salary schedule, current salary schedule. And so, um. Right, the very last kind of sentence I mentioned in my background discussion is, you know, this is the discussion point for council. So what do you guys wish to do? Um, the only thing I'll mention, feel free to do whatever you guys please to do. Uh, it should be on some kind of salary schedule. Uh, and that's a CalPERS regulation, and that needs to go up on the website. So meaning, make a new, and, and I call these. Uh, columns, ranges, so the range of fire chief, the range of finance director, so forth. And then steps are going from left to right.
We adopt.
Years of service?
We adopt them, but essentially they're just from council.
I believe, yeah, we, we typically adopt it around union negotiations. And then I believe we also adopt it when we do have new city manager contracts as well. We did move, yeah, we did, yeah.
And so, yeah, the contract between the city manager and council, right, that's established, that's set. Um, from there, I basically do a random range backwards, forwards. Um, and then depending on whatever the contract is negotiated, if there's a certain percentage increases. Yada yada, then I kind of build that into the spreadsheet or anything for, so for that's for city manager. Now for like fire chief, myself, uh, public works director. Resiliency, um, or hazard mitigation planner. Um, those were kind of determined by city manager at that point to where, what's a, what's a kind of.
Point of order, the, um, the resilience officer salary survey is prescribed in the grant.
Very good, excellent, good job. Right, so from there, and, and those are like the, I have an employment agreement with the city that essentially was negotiated with city manager. Right, so as my direct supervisor, which. Yeah, yeah. And then I just kind of fill in according to like what the, what the, so below where it says union position is below, right, that's all. Union negotiated, so we can't touch, y'all can't touch that. In a direct sense that there will be union negotiations opening fairly soon. And, but that's a different, different whole ballgame. Sometimes we do come forward with like, hey, can the salaries above the schedule have the same cola? Cost of living adjustment. Um, as the union negotiated salaries, so that's another key, another piece there as well.
Mr. Mayor.
The union will definitely do.
Yep, sorry, um, can you have all the council members make sure to turn on their microphones, we can't hear some of them.
Alrights.
Good, thanks David.
Thank you.
Uh, I forget where I was going with any of that stuff. So anyway, I am, so I'm currently on the finance director range. Uh, step six, I believe. And so. Feel free to discuss each point and I, um, nobody is asking me to do this, but I'm happy and I will step outside. If you would like to just discuss without me staring at you all in the face, uh, so I can go do that.
Intense eye contact. I don't want to break the entire.
Let, let's open it up to public comment, so then you get into discussions. Since the, and since the entire meeting is recorded anyways.
I, I can look over this way or something if need be.
You have to go into Zoom now, please, buddy.
Anyway, I, I know nobody, nobody was forcing me, you know, I realized all that stuff, but if anybody did, I mean, I'm happy to, to still do that.
That unless there's anything else, uh, maybe we will just open this up to public comment, see if anyone has any inputs. Uh, so that, seeing nothing, I will open this item up for public comment, please limit any comment to this particular item. Uh, three minutes, thirty second warning when your time is almost up. If I do see a hand raised on Zoom, is there anyone in person who would like to go first? Seeing no one, um, can you please unmute Quinton? Mark, you are unmuted.
Yeah, Quentin Gaddy, fifty nine fifty six, uh, Castle Avenue, uh, yeah, had the pleasure and honor to work with Blake for the last five years. And, uh, in a lot of different capacities, he's just a real stand up guy. Um, does a really good job, uh, great communicator. Um, and like, you just, like, whenever you need to get him, he's going to be there, and I think the city should, should, uh, uh. You know, pay, pay, pay that in kind with the fact that, no, you know, this isn't the first time he's had to do this as well. And he always steps up to the plate and manages things well and, uh, just very appreciative, uh, of, of his work as a, uh. A colleague and as a citizen of Dunsmere, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Alright, any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item.
I'll make a motion to appoint Blake Michelson interim city manager, adjust his salary to step one of the city manager range. And direct the city attorney to review employment details and return with the employment details at the next meeting. Because I don't know what employment detail staying the same means, and I want to make sure that there is information in a contract to you. That, you know, essentially allows you to resume your role as finance director if for some reason we want to fire you. Um, so I want to make sure like that's not going to happen, but I want to make sure that we're. We're essentially assigning you the role of interim city manager with the appropriate employee details related to that. And I'd like David to look into this and make sure that that's appropriate.
Alright, can I ask a clarification question to your motion?
Yes.
Uh, so when you say, excuse me, when you say details, um. Do, do you imagine that taking the form of a employment contract for Mr. Michelson? I would recommend that, that you.
I, yeah, I, I, I would like to do that, yes.
So, um, just to clarify, then your motion would be to, uh, go to step one and have me draft a, um. Contract, okay. And for clarification also, um, I know the step list, um. Is listed with, uh, four digits, like sixty four point one four, or sixty four point four one. For purposes, people who don't know how the steps work, meaning me, what is that actually translated into as an annual?
I can take this one unless you want to Blake, it's, that's just the salary equivalent of an hourly rate. So the, the salary would just be that number times.
There's no dollar sign there, I think is what.
Yeah, it's just a dollar, yeah, dollar number.
Or per hour.
Yeah, dollar number of the hour, hourly equivalent of the salary.
Multiply it by two thousand and eighty.
Yep, for the annual.
For annual, yeah. And just to clarify, my, my statement was simply like vacations and sick. Accruals and that kind of stuff would just.
Exactly, that's why I want David to draft you a contract, so.
Appreciate it.
Can, can I, one question or two questions, how many times have you stepped into this role?
This will be the second.
Second time.
Second, okay, and what step were you at the first time you took over?
I believe it was first, but it was well under this first step, because the last city manager who left and Blake took the place. It was a significantly lower, um, salary.
Well, I, I can answer with maybe more detail, it was, uh, a very different, uh, setup. Um, Blake very kindly, uh, insisted on, uh, a raise to his current salary that put us cumulatively with other expenses we incurred. Uh, and adjustments we made, um, at the time to come into the equivalent of the prior salary.
That's right, because we didn't give you a raise for like the first three years you worked for us. Just remember that, because, uh, so preview, okay. Is there, is there a second to my motion first off? We shouldn't have discussion unless there's a second or the motion can fail.
Is there a second to Juliana's motion?
There is, but I wanted to discuss interim versus acting. And what the intention of council is behind that, because that relates to the committees.
Interim is the appropriate word for a temporary position in which you're elevating yourself into a different description and different salary category. And it is important for CalPERS to make. And it is important for CalPERS to make that distinction.
Cool.
So like, for example, if my boss went on vacation, which he did, did recently, he can assign the acting role where that person becomes city manager signatory, um, for a temporary period of time, but there is no salary compensation in that time. So for example, last week I was the acting city manager of Wyrica. Um, interim is a more fuller time position that typically comes with a salary increase. And there are certain aspects that impact CalPERS related to that.
Cool, I understood, that's how I understood it. I guess I'm, just want to make sure when our contract does go into place that we have the ability for Blake to resume finance committee or commit, finance director duties, uh, immediately if council goes a different direction. Either with a permanent or different interim, interim opportunity. If that's the decision in the future, we want to stay nimble as a co- committee essentially.
Yeah.
Guess it with Blake, where if we need to add capacity in one way or another, we want to be able to do that, so I just don't want to lock, um, ascend anything doesn't really work in the future, but I'm Blake, thank you so much for doing two jobs, because he's not doing just the city manager job for the lowest city manager. Right, he's still doing the finance director job.
Yeah, and I'll follow it.
Was there a second to my motion?
I did.
There was.
Okay, there was a second. So, so you're, you're essentially stating that you would not vote, vote for the motion on the table, but that you would prefer an amendment to the motion to step four? Which one would you like? You can't pick both. Four, okay. Is there, uh, any other discussion on that?
Uh, my only discussion would be, I, I don't look at things in hourly pay, I look at yearly budget, so it's a little I'm, I'm in favor of compensating Blake during this time where he's really burning the candle at both ends. Thank you for all you do for keeping us going. Um, excited about getting us through this interim period and onto more permanent footing and moving forward, so I would support that.
You would support amending the motion to step four?
Yes, I would support amending the motion to step four.
I'll agree to that friendly amendment.
But when we do the contract, I'd like to see cumulative amounts, not just hourly.
Correct, it would have to be.
I want to see dollar.
So, um. So, um, excuse me, I, I apologize to the council, for some reason my button has frozen on Zoom, I can't un-camera myself, I'm sort of putting myself on camera, so.
Yeah.
Apologize. Um, to answer that question, I've done the quick math and somebody may want to check me, so step four of the city manager is at a rate of sixty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents an hour. Multiply that by two thousand and eighty, the annual salary for the interim city manager position for Mr. Michelson would be one hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty cents. And then just to finish the thought, the previous motion which has been withdrawn to put him at step one would have been one hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty cents. And Mr. Michelson's current pay as the finance director at step six is eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and forty cents. Meaning the city would be paying an additional fifty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty cents to Mr. Michelson to act as interim city manager and continue his duties as finance director.
So, so I do just want to point this out there, and this is where I think it, since we usually deal with hourly or, um, yearly salaries, another thing I just want to put out there for this conversation is that I very, very much hope that we are not sitting here, and as a member of the committee, I have no intention of sitting here next December.
Yeah.
Without having a finalized city manager, so, I mean, talking about this as a, in a yearly sense, I would I would rather find, as a, see more monthly numbers in the contract versus this, because, I mean, I'm hoping that we have.
So I think we're getting way too in the weeds of this. Again, David is gonna go through, he's gonna work with Aggie on the HR details because there are very specific pieces that have to be in this. I think we just give direction tonight on which step you want.
All right, I will say, I do not want, uh, I'm okay with this. Well, no, it's, we, we need to have the number not be above what the, um, offered position, minimum range for offered position would be. I don't think this is necessarily wildly above it, but it is above what we started, uh, our last city manager at, so I'm just pointing out that.
And he's not going to make that any, I mean, we're not.
When we go advertise out for city manager, if we were to advertise a range that say started at, uh, the lower side.
So again, we're getting into city manager search, which is not the topic at hand.
Yeah.
The topic at hand.
I know.
A motion on the table, the motion was friendly amended to step four.
Yeah, I supported that, so I'll, I'll continue, and I was just bringing up.
I'll call to question.
Is there, all right, all those, there's a motion and a second, we'll need a roll call vote for this, um.
Can I just, can I just repeat the motion as I have it, so you guys can make sure, before I take the roll call? Um, so I had a first motion by Lukasey, a second by Brian to appoint Blake to step one interim city manager, adjust his salary to step one of the city manager salary range. And keep all other employment details the same.
No.
Confer with the city attorney that they are assigning him to step one of an interim city manager with appropriate employment details.
So no, no, let, let me restate it for you, okay. So it is a motion to appoint Blake Michelson to the position of interim city manager. Adjust his salary to step four of the city manager salary.
So I hadn't gotten to my amended motion, but go ahead.
This is the motion on the table, motion to appoint Blake Michelson interim city manager. Adjust his salary to step four of the city manager salary range. And direct the city attorney to prepare employment details in the form of a contract to be brought to the city council at the next meeting.
Second.
That is the motion. Well, we, we already have gotten there, so it's called a question.
Okay, council member Brian?
Hi.
Council member Lukasey?
Hi.
Council member Hubbard?
Hi.
Council, or sorry, vice mayor Sebring?
Hi.
And mayor Claire Noe.
Hi.
Congratulations, now, back, or now interim city manager, Michelson, welcome. All right, uh, with that, we'll move on to the next item, uh, city manager search update ad hoc committee report. Um, and I believe there was also another action item on this one of.
Well, I didn't, in my staff report, I wrote, I didn't have an action item, but I did just want to say that, just to start this off.
Well, no, we needed to ratify the members after public comment, because there was not a chance for public comment. So just as an action item, just so anyone is aware, after public comment on this item, um, there will be a move to ratify the two members who were um, appointed by council at the last meeting, but since there was no public comment, since that had already been done, uh, we just wanted to give a chance for public input, uh, those two members are myself, um, and, uh, council member Brian. Um, I'm gonna hand off the, um, we have met, uh, several times and discussed things. Um, I'm gonna hand this off to council member Brian, if I believe he can state everything.
Yeah.
A little bit more eloquently than I can on this matter.
Well, uh, thank you, Mayor Claire Noe, um, we've actually been quite busy in this regard, and thank you, Blake, for your support and, uh, collaboration. Uh, and sorry for getting into this topic a little bit before, it's all very related, um, coming up with what the best plan would be, um, thankfully. Uh, our finance director is completely at peace with getting us through this time to have, to when we have a permanent city manager. Uh, he's also very open, and we are as well, to exploring whether there's maybe other interim city manager possibilities that could increase our capacity, keep us on track. Um, I reached out to, um, a couple of people that were qualified, uh, had extensive experience with city management. Uh, including, um, a gentleman who, who helps consult and does mentorship programs through the League California Cities, his name's Brad Kilgore. Really good, uh, and he's actually willing to provide technical assistance and or mentoring, mentorship to, uh, whoever's, we have a city manager, including our finance director. Um, during this time, uh, he sent out an email blast to, uh, a list of, um, retired city managers, people who like to interim. Um, and the main feedback he received is due to our location, it's just a difficult, it's intriguing to them, they like the idea, but no one's really, uh, jumped at it yet, so we've given him a, uh, synopsis of what we're going through as a city right now. Um, and how we might be willing to be flexible when it comes to attendance, so many days a week, et cetera, um, so that is out there, if we get anything back, we'll report it. But, um, we're very appreciative of the stability that Blake brings to the, the city, and, uh, i- if there's a way to increase capacity between now and then, we'll bring it to you, we don't expect that.
And I also just wanted to kind of bring this point up as well, with the builds up this, when we talked with, uh, Blake, is we mentioned this during the last meeting, but we really want to make sure we find the right candidate, no matter how long that takes. Um, ideally, obviously, we want to find them as soon as possible, but we also don't want to settle for someone and not get the right person, so we're, you know, when we're discussing, um, interims with Blake, uh, one thing that came up is, well, how long is this going to be? Because obviously doing two jobs is a lot of work and a lot of, you know, there's also going to be a lot of stuff that doesn't necessarily happen. So if this is a long process and it does take a long time, longer than we want, that's also been built up of this conversation as well. Um, because then, at a certain point, you can't do two jobs for an extremely long period of time.
And while being city manager, a very specific role with its responsibilities, um, knowledge and help with tasks, someone who's knowledgeable could be an ideal situation if it arises, but we're not going to rush into paying someone consulting fees if they can't actually deliver, so it, we'll see if that evolves. Um, that's everything on the interim, we've already decided for now on that, but just be aware, uh, some effort was put into that. Um, and I plan on getting Blake in touch with, uh, this Brad person, see if there's anything useful there, if not, you know, we'll see where it goes. Um, as far as city manager search goes, um, really, if we start at the top, we have two options. Um, we do it ourselves, and that may turn into literally council and or the committee literally does every bit of it themselves. Um, councilman Lukasey generally was on a committee where that did in fact transpire. Or we could, uh, use our, or use outside consultants or firms to help us with the search. Um, there's pros and cons to both, obviously in-house is cheaper, um, the downside to it is it, it'll take longer. Um, it'll generally be, uh, less professional, more, um, it, it has to happen quicker, we just, we have full-time jobs, you know, the, the five of us, so a perfect example would be if we had twenty-two candidates like we had last time when using a, a search firm. Uh, each one would come with references, each one would need an initial interview. Uh, it's extensive just to, you know, we're talking a couple hours potentially to vet one candidate. To then even just prepare them for a first round interview, second round interview, so as I've been thinking about this, I've kind of discovered that doing it in-house from the committee, uh, while we'd be happy to do it, if that's what council wants, it's going to be limited, you know, we're, we're going to probably get fewer than twenty-two. Because there's marketing, there's vetting the candidates, there's, uh, the interviews, et cetera, so I, I, I did reach out to the firm the city has used before, and I did a review of everything we did. And, uh, it was very pleasant to, to review that, a lot of the recommendations that the community had last time, that council discussed, we in fact did last time. Um, I will say that, uh, um, the consultants was WBCP, I've reached out to them. The direct person who helped us is no longer with that company, but the owner of the company, the president, uh, Wendy Brown, talked to us on several occasions. Michael actually, uh, joined for one of the calls.
I had a chance to join in on one of the.
Yeah.
People know from last meeting, I'm probably one of the more resistant people to using an executive search firm here, I do I do recognize the crunch that we are in in terms of overall, in terms of finding someone. I was actually impressed, um, with this firm, they are relatively local, they're in Southern Oregon, um, woman on firm, it's, they, yeah, they, there, it was a good conversation.
Well, and without getting into this particular firm, so the, the idea of using outside help, I think is, it's a recommendation of the committee that we, we don't do it completely in-house, we don't have the, the other thing is when we did it in-house, we also had an interim city manager that was from the outside, who'd done it for decades. Who, whose job description involved finding us, you know, helping us find that replacement in part. So, I think that with our current setup, the outside help will make it go quicker, and my goal and Michael's goal was, we need to get to market essentially, we need to make sure we know what options are available, all of them, and then make the best decision. And it may be very difficult with the in-house to know all the options. I'm not saying the results would be different, it could be, we decide on an option that we would have found otherwise. But I found a lot of peace in knowing that we had a, a broad, broad net last time. Um, as far as what they're willing to do for us, I did discuss, um, the prior relationship and the fact that they've already, uh, been to Dunsmere. Uh, you know, I guess everyone loves our town, but they, they did say good things about our town, and they've done some of the research for why someone would want to live here, work here, be here. Um, I did forward council, um, information from last time for your review to, you know, check out the firm, feel free to call them. Ask any questions, uh, they'd be willing to do it for a discounted rate, normally it's twenty-nine thousand for the full, this would be the full scope service. They'd be willing to discount it to twenty-four, uh, if we wanted to use them again. Um, I, I would also say, we, we'll get a full contract, we'll have to, you know, go through that process. They just seem like a, they've addressed a lot of concerns I also have with executive search firms, they don't represent people being hired, ever. That's really important to me, that they're not being paid by people to get them jobs and being paid by us to find employees, and they just match it up and make the most money. Um, so that, that's really good, and, uh, our experience, notwithstanding some of the longer-term results, um, was quite positive in the.
Just really quick.
Yeah.
What is the item on the agenda right now?
Just an update from, uh, just filling in, you know, we've talked to what we can.
That kind of sounds like it's like edging towards a discussion and like making a decision on if we're gonna go to a consulting firm or not. And so I'm wondering if we could kind of tighten up the report, since this will most likely return to us to make a decision on an executive search firm or not. I'm just concerned because the item that was advertised to the general public was to solidify the appointment of the two people on the ad hoc. And this is turning into a discussion item on the executive search firms. And I just want to keep us on track and make sure that if people do have an opinion on this, that they understood, like, what the item was gonna be tonight, because there may have been people.
Let me just say that, it's a city manager search update.
Some updates might include info on previous search firm, initiating search internally with specific tasks, items for HR consultant, input from citizens, ideas on employment, so I think this is all covered under that.
Okay, but just to clarify to the general public, no decision is going to be made regarding this item tonight. So we're gonna hear this item again at a future meeting.
Honestly, as far as the decisions go, this is a report item from committee, the committee's allowed to recommend whatever they'd like. Uh, whatever there's consensus on, it's up to the council to provide direction at this point, it's.
Well, I mean, I'm just talking for like Brown Act.
Yeah, yeah.
What is the item on the agenda?
The item is city manager search, council can provide direction at this time on any items regarding city manager search, I'm not I'm not asking to authorize this.
I'm just, I'm just like, can we, can we really?
Can we stop talking about process and maybe just focus on the options available are, do we want to pursue a firm, are we interested in developing the prior firm? Or do we want to do it much longer? So to give a perspective, if we use our, if we go in-house, we can start right away. But it may slow down later on when the work piles up, but we can certainly do a, do a, um, a meeting with the public, survey, community engagement, council interviews, staff exit interviews, all of that. For example, is included in the firm I'm discussing here that we've, we've had experience with before. Um, I think that's all wonderful things that we should do, we can begin that process, um, or we could send out an RFP. Request people, all these executive firms, if they want to do it, we get that, compare, compare notes, interview them. In, in other words, spend two months finding the firm you want to use to find the city manager. Or if we thought the, the, uh, proposal were adequate and or found maybe additional quotes without going through a full RFP, um, we could potentially select, uh, a firm that we felt confidence in, that we got a fair price within the market and move forward. I know there's maybe expertise as far as what we're allowed to do with the selection. But that might actually put us in a comfort zone to really begin this process at the timeline that I think council would like. So I think our recommendation was to explore using the prior firm. And to, to seek outside help, the prior firm has multiple options, including a hybrid where, um, we could potentially utilize our HR consultant for part of it or not. But they also said, here's the full scope, and we would want you to be aware of what you'd be giving up if you weren't doing the full scope.
So I don't think you'd be voting on whether or not to use the, the previous consultant at this meeting, but I think it's more council direction on whether or not that avenue that we should continue to look into, and maybe bring something to the next meeting for the final.
Yeah.
You know, to, to, to firm it all, and I think that's kind of where the, where.
Yeah, it's, provide us with direction to develop an option more fully. Because it, we, we could develop what an in-house search looks like, if that's what you guys want, we could develop an RFP. Get that going, if that's what you guys would like, or we could get a more firm approach with, um, executive search, search firms that we have experience with. Oh, those are kind of the easy.
Right, without any questions before I open it up. Right. Without any questions before I open it up to public comment?
No.
Nope. All right. Um, with that, I'll open this item up to public comment. Uh, anyone will have three minutes, thirty-second warning. When your time is almost up, please limit your comments to this particular item. You're on Zoom, please raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment. All right, seeing no one, I will close public comment on this item. All right. Council discussion and direction time.
The item on the agenda is just says ad hoc committee report. I understand you pointed to the staff report, but it's what's on the actual agenda. So I'll be abstaining from any vote at this time.
Okay. All right, anything else?
For the report.
You guys, you, you can provide input and direction.
Um, can we get?
Yeah, you, you can. It's, it's not a vote.
Find to leaning towards maybe hiring the firm that we used last time.
And we don't, I mean, we don't even need to necessarily vote anything. We can just kind of get.
Discuss it.
Discuss it and then we can take that.
We can't accept it now. We don't have a contract to look at or, or terms. It's, it's really, do you guys, what do you want to see more of in those three options?
Well, I think casting a wider net certainly could be very beneficial. I'm sorry.
Let me just, let me just do it real quickly then, just so that way we can settle up what we can and can't talk about and get that, and get. So that way we can all participate wherever we want or the best ability that we can. Um, David, do you mind just jumping in here a little bit on this procedural issue based on the wording on the agenda? Whether or not we can take the staff agenda and what we, what we, what council can and can't recommend that this. Count or that the committee do at this time.
Yeah, so, um, the agenda reads city manager search update, ad hoc committee report. So I think everything that everyone has talked about up to this point is fine. And I do think that if council wants to give recommendations and direction to the ad hoc committee right now, that's also fine.
Okay, yeah, but we just can't make any long-term real binding decisions. Gotcha. Okay. All right, um, anything else?
Yeah, so definitely having a wide net of potential candidates definitely sounds like the best option so we can thoroughly vet them. Um. But we definitely need to be cognizant of time. We definitely, all of us have full-time jobs and there's only so many hours in the day that we often commit. Um, so I can definitely see the use of having a firm. Um, so those are all really good points. It'll take some thought.
Well, I don't think there's necessarily a motion, um, just to basic understanding that we'll continue working along. Um, the current path and then bring something back to council, um, most likely at the next meeting.
Could I maybe ask?
More official recommendation?
Pretty input on whether we'd like to see, uh, more an RFP process or if, i- if there would be a way to engage with the firm before I, I. One saves time potentially, but the other one might be a more thorough, transparent approach. Um.
Right.
Eager to hear input on what, what, what we should lean on.
I like the idea that the firm is in Southern Oregon. Did you say Medford?
Uh, Rogue River, actually.
Kind of like that, cause at least they know. Uh, so maybe we can give them more direction that we're looking for someone like in this area, at least like the Pacific Northwest, maybe. I don't know. But. I feel like it would save time to go with someone we've previously used.
Right? So anything else? Nope.
All right, thank you guys.
All right, um, with that, we will, the committee will continue to meet. We'll meet at least once, probably three or four times throughout, in between now and the next meeting. And we'll come up with something, uh, for the next meeting. All right.
Okay.
And then just also for members of the community, feel free to reach out to me at any time or council member Brian. Um, we'd love to, um, get public input on this whole process as well. So, uh, with that, uh. On to the next item. Right, uh. New business item A, authorized temporary position in city hall.
Great. So you guys have kind of mentioned, um, it is difficult to do two jobs. And so this is, uh, basically an ask to authorize, uh, a temporary, um, position. Uh, at city hall. There is a slightly other option of, um, well, I'll get to it later. So, um, right, there are basically four positions, three people doing those positions now. So if we can essentially bring somebody in at, at certain degrees, and I'm trying to be a little bit vague in general in my. In my agenda item, so that there's a little bit of flexibility. This additional person will, the ideal is to then increase capacity for. The current staff that's in city hall right now. There's been some discussion or some feedback on, you know, city hall opening hours as a, as a, just a small example. So as we can potentially bring somebody else in, potentially we can bring that level of service up. Right? In, increase open hours of city hall. Um, so. The recommendation is, or what I would propose, right, is approximately a fiscal component of around twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. For potentially a six-month period. And so again, I'll revert to the salary schedule that was included in the packet. As well as the personnel budget for, uh, that, that was adopted by council. As such, in the budget, there is a part-time public works position that's already in there. So I'm just trying to get my finance director hat on to potentially be, uh, to, to. Have the weight or the, the, the zero-sum game of this, of this position. Now, if we do in the future, do the public work part-time position was for essentially mowing lawns in the seasonal work. We can come to that position at the later date. So that's where I just want to say, if we want to reallocate a public works part-time position as opposed to this city hall. Position that is, that is an option. Um, I still think the motion would probably be beneficial to say. We will be spending twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars, but, um, I know you all are smart enough that you might be able to. Consider something along that matter.
Can I just point something out?
Yep.
So currently in the budget, we have two employees budgeted. We have a city manager budgeted and we have a finance director budgeted.
We're paying both.
We're paying both under the current budget and so theoretically you can take the difference between.
We're paying.
Well, yes, we are both. Yeah, yeah, but they, they're not filled. So there's a difference of about fifty thousand dollars between those two. So as long as those two's positions are not filled, there's about fifty thou.
No, we're, we're paying the severance.
Well, yes, we are paying the severance, but theoretically.
Unless that comes out of a different budget.
But yeah.
But I agree with the, the thought. So I, I don't think we need to eliminate the public works necessarily.
No, I.
Um, would be, I'm in concurrence with that.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions before I open this up for public comment? Nope. All right, public comment time, three minutes, thirty-second warning, same rules as always. Um. Feel free to raise your hand on Zoom if you have a comment. Seeing no one, I will close public comment on this item. All right, council discussion time.
Just really quick, um, so full transparency, I talked to Blake about adding this on this agenda. Because I thought about the last time Blake served as interim city manager, which he did a lovely job of, but. Um, I don't know who else was here for that, if it was you and you. I know you for sure, but if you'll remember, um. This is no offense to you, but you got, Blake got very burnt out doing two jobs and we didn't think about temporary hires for the position. And so that's why I suggested we added it this time because I wouldn't want to see long-term performance. Go down in city hall overall, having to, to fill in those gaps. Um, and so that was my suggestion for it. Um. I'd like to just do a temp hire for, for one calendar year, um, personally, just because. These city manager searches usually take about six to nine months. And having a, a temporary individual for a year would not be the end of the world, um, especially if it's at a lower level, which is a fiscal admin tech one.
Does that work with Calpers?
So there, there is temporary higher, uh, conditions of the, uh, temp, if it's related to this kind of circumstance.
Yeah, so we did calculate this. We can get into finance committee as well on this, but we will, um. But start then with Calpers. So they will be, if, if they are a, you know, longer than a. Nine hundred and sixty hours or something along those lines, then they will be on pers. And we know that they, so anyway, we will be paying pers on this employee at day one.
I guess in order to.
Or, okay, and actually, I, I asked the wrong question because I pretty much knew that answer. The question I meant to ask is. Um, how long, no, union, how long do the, how long can we have them working before they? Become part of the union? Cause I believe that's time-based, not role-based. But I mean, we can't hire like a temporary, temporary person. It's only temporary for three years and, you know. Yeah. So what's the time limit for, before we, that comes into play?
Uh, see, I think they will be a, in part of the union.
Yeah, they.
Will be part of the union. This will be a union position. Yeah.
Oh, it is, even though it's.
Now, the, the position itself could, um, elect to not pay into the union, which means they would not have a vote in the union. But they would technically be governed by union rules.
Right.
Yeah, okay, okay. Even though it's, yeah, even though it's a temporary position that hasn't ended. Gotcha. Okay.
Right. Yeah, there are several classifications in the MOU that specify, you know, full-time, part-time, seasonal, temporary.
Okay. All right. As long as it's, as long as every, as long as whatever we do is in accordance with the union MOU. I'm happy with whatever we do. Yeah.
Yeah. So in terms of an actual body, this person will be pers, social security, Medicare.
Yeah.
No medical benefits at this point.
Yeah.
So no health insurance payments. I, I will mention just that one outside. I did want to mention the outside contractor. I do know of a. Entity that can help do some kind of finance director, you know, tasks as well. And so maybe that can be a, a different item.
I think when I first suggested this to you, I think my intent was to have a body in the office to be able to field questions. To be able to provide just people support. Um, I'm not as concerned about. You know, the technicality of, of having that servant. I think if, I think if. You know, you were the person who had left as a finance director, I think a consultant filling that role temporarily would be a different question, but I think. I think at least with my initial intent, it was to provide another body to answer the phones, to answer questions, answer emails from the community. Because that can get very overwhelming, um, you know, that type of stuff, but that, that was my intent. Um, opened out what the rest of council would like.
What would you like?
Uh, I, I think a person in city hall would be, would be great. Yeah. I, I may, I may bring back a second item later that just helps. With a more finance-specific scope of with, and potentially that's just for the audit purposes, just to kind of say. Here's a specific contract. You're going to help with the twenty-four, twenty-five audit. And, and I may bring that back, but that'll be a later time.
Okay. Well, I did hear some intention about making it longer. Um, I'm, I'm open to that idea if it doesn't change things too much, maybe. Cause I wouldn't want a candidate that own, uh, we need to be maybe upfront with the candidate about what the timeframe would be. And if we really expect it to be, what do I say, nine months, two year? I don't know, or six months to twelve?
Yeah.
You know, as far as the.
I would just say not to exceed one year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Temporary, not to exceed one year.
Yeah, yeah. Maximum cross not to, you know, between the forty to fifty thousand.
You could have a Calpers and Newton want to come back and they can, they, they are allowed to come back for up to six months. So you could have a, a Calp, that would be the ideal is a Calpers and Newton who is very experienced in whatever this field is. Um, yeah.
Wait, when are you thinking of putting in position over to recruit for, for it?
I'd say right away.
Right away.
Yeah. I, I, I will want to talk, I will want to converse with current staff and try and get a good scope and a good.
But next week, you're, it's probably not going to be.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, um. Can we, what if, need to check, yeah, what if we do, cause we have had several significant. Things that affect the budget happen recently, the pass and measure D. Um, your sal, you know, the, this, the aforementioned, uh, increase in your salary while you're the interim. Um. I would like to have, I would like to take a look at a few of these changes in finance committee and make sure.
It's a good thing you're in finance committee. Yeah.
I know, exactly. Well, I was saying if, if we do one on the first Monday in December, so council authorizes. Us to go up to one year and then we kind of take a look at everything in finance committee.
Maybe as a point of order here, I, I would say we create the position with the budget here. Finance committee is going to be weighing in on all the budgetary's projections.
I'm just saying we need a finance committee soon. We authorize it today for up to one year.
It's, it's kind, for me, it's a, it's a good reminder that we should consider all the budgetary changes in finance committee, but I think we. For the sake of Blake, moving forward on it, uh, just give him a position. So I'll move that we authorize this, uh. Temp position modifier to set, I'm sorry, temp position, um. With the fiscal component in the twenty, forty to fifty thousand range, not to exceed twelve months.
I'll second.
You're good.
There a second or did you?
I second.
Second.
Second. I'm tired. All right, um, it's been moved and seconded, uh, we'll have to do a.
Council member Luke Casey.
Aye.
Council member Hubbard.
Aye.
House member Brian.
Aye.
Vice mayor Seabream.
Aye.
And Mayor Clarno.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Right, uh. Your agenda items, I know you said you have one later, and I thought someone, Matthew, did you have a future agenda? Well.
And so, real quick, I did, uh, uh, try and text David while we were on this meeting about this. So the next meeting will be a joint. Right? The joint city council planning commission meeting. And so we're trying to discuss, we're going to nail down. Actual specific if council action items can happen at this next meeting. And so. Just want to throw that out there in case that is affecting this. But then I do, I can predict to do some updates on the cannabis ordinance, but that's.
Or would it be possible to do the meeting, adjourn the planning commission portion of it and then?
David and I will figure that out.
Here's the thing, my, my requested ad hoc item can go to the meeting after the joint meeting. So all of my things that I have requested to date that are in the minutes. Go to a regular city council meeting, not a joint meeting.
While we're on the subject, uh, would anyone be open to moving the meeting to, I guess that'd be December eleventh, Thursday? As opposed to the third, so that we keep things timely and maybe don't rush up against the holiday.
You're talking about having a second year.
Having a city council meeting on December eleventh. It could be fast, quick, instead of on the.
Instead of the eighteenth.
Yes.
I mean, I guess what, what action items do you feel are that immediate?
I would like to get clarity and direction on city manager's search direction is the big one. And, um, before the new year actually begins, I'd like to form the ad hoc committee for the downtown or the economic development. I feel like those two.
Me too.
And we'd be able to drop the eighteenth as compensation.
Is that, is that, is that?
Or we're already dropping the first. We're not, I mean, I.
We, we probably need the eleventh and the eighteenth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm available the eleventh if other people are and we need to move things forward quickly. Um, we might have two shorter meetings if we have two.
Let's just plan, we'll have to try to keep it to two shorter meetings in December and then we'll drop the one-one meeting.
No, we're, we're still having the long meetings, the fourth with everyone.
What?
With the planning commission.
Regardless, yeah, yeah.
So a joint meeting on the fourth.
Yeah.
Correct.
Council planning, joint fourth.
Yes.
And finance.
Oh, and some fin, and finance committee members, right? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good trick. And then a meeting on the eleventh, a city council meeting on the eleven and a city council meeting on the eighteen.
Yes.
Eleventh doesn't work for me, just that, but I feel free to go ahead and do it, but I would be with it that day.
Okay.
Will we at least have quorum?
We'll be here on the eleventh.
Not sure.
Okay, why don't you talk to Blake and as long as you're available, we'll do the meeting.
Okay. I just have.
Well, no, we'll still have it.
Just have a quorum with three, so.
Some quorum, so yeah, we'll do.
You know what? No, if, if we're going to decide more important things, we should have the full council, I think. So that, that's fine.
Who wants to meet on Thanksgiving?
No eleventh. We're gonna have a long meeting on the eighteenth, guys.
Well, so if there is anything important, feel free to reach out to me for the fourth and I will confirm with David whether we can or cannot do it. And we'll move forward in that way, but I I have the direction now.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
Can I ask? If we're having a joint meeting, can we make it earlier? Is there any way we can do that? Like, how long are we?
There's, there's so many people involved.
Cause I mean, just for.
Yeah.
I have small humans and I can't be here till midnight, so.
Oh, I don't, no, no. It'll probably be two to three hours.
This would be a great time for you to tell the, you can tell the consultants to speed up their presentations. No.
To this meeting started, this was gonna be a short meeting, which is why I'm kind of upset.
I apologize.
Correct. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourn.
Thanks all.
Everybody.